...to our economy and to the downturn in the housing market. We're all pretty much committed to not cutting public safety. We still believe that for the vitality of the city of Los Angeles, we have to keep it safe. And one of the ways we can raise revenue is to encourage more tourism in Los Angeles, because we know that for every 4% increase in tourism, that equals about $12 million to our general fund. So, but tourists aren't going to come here if they don't think it's safe. So, we can't cut police and fire, but we've got to really put in some measures that can make some cuts, but also figure out how to raise revenue.
If public safety is off the table, and presuming that you can't come up with over the next 18 months, say, oh, $600 million in new revenue, what else can we cut? What would you suggest?
Well, it's tough. I actually have encouraged our budget folks to go back to the table and look at how we can increase revenue, because I don't think we're doing a good enough job of trying to bring in more revenue. For instance, I suggested an oil extraction fee. Every time a barrel of oil is extracted from the city of Los Angeles, we could be charging a fee, like other cities. Long Beach, for instance, charges about 40 cents per barrel. It raises them anywhere from 6 to 10 million dollars. So, that's something I think we should look at in the city of Los Angeles. We don't even really know, at this point, how many barrels of oil are extracted from the city of Los Angeles, but why not take a look at that? Why not charge at least 40%, maybe more, and raise ourselves a little more than 10 million? I also think it might be time to revisit the idea of opening up advertising or naming rights on some of our city property, some of our city vehicles. You know, you can be sort of prim and proper about the idea of having other people's names on your vehicles until you go through a budget crisis. And then maybe we might consider relaxing that policy and seeing what kind of revenue we could generate by allowing people to advertise on our vehicles. I think we ought to look at everything. I don't want to cut libraries. I don't want to cut the services to people's sidewalks and streets. I don't want to cut basic services. So, I want to figure out how we, on the other side, can raise the revenue.
And finally, I'm sure someone is watching this program saying, "Wait a minute. Didn't we just pass Proposition S, the telephone users' tax? That really didn't bring brand-new revenue to the city budget, did it?"
Well, no. That was revenue we were currently counting on our books, $270 million that we would have lost if Prop S had not been passed. That was money we were pretty much accustomed to collecting. So, we're very grateful to the voters for letting us continue to collect that. But that's a great example. That was 270 million, which we felt would have been a huge fiscal emergency if we were not able to collect that. This budget shortfall for next year, $300 million. So, we're in a bit of a bad time right now.
Well, that really puts it in perspective. And we hope you'll help us follow along with this as all of these measures pass through during the course of the next year. District 15 Councilmember Janice Hahn, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
It's always great to be here, Jack.
Again, all three items to improve air quality at the ports passed with a unanimous vote of 12 ayes. You can listen to city council meetings, as well as committee and commission meetings, on the telephone by using the city's council phone system. In the downtown area, dial 213-621-CITY. In West LA, dial 310-471-CITY. For the San Pedro area, dial 310-547-CITY. And in the San Fernando Valley, dial 818-904-9450. Just follow the recorded instructions for the meetings you want to hear. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall, or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m. On Saturday and Sunday at 9:30 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending February 29th, 2008. On behalf of Ted Lynn and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
(Music)
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 Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alacon Cardenas, Grohan, Weisar, Labange Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosanel Smith, Weiss, Weston, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present in a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you very much. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Yes, Mr. Westen moves, Mr. Smith seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those will be approved.
On the regular agenda, Madam President, item number one is an item noticed for public hearing, and the Bureau of Street Lighting has requested that matter be continued to April the ninth. And also, the Treasurer has notified the Clerk's office that there is an error in their correspondence, and the interest rate should be 6.43 percent.
Okay, we will make that change and continue that item to April ninth. Next items.
Next items, uh, next item is, uh, street lighting, district ordinance, and I believe twelve council members will be present today. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
You know what, we probably should go ahead and vote. I'm not sure we have to be believing and coming back, so if we'll have twelve members present at any time. So let's go ahead and approve. We can reconsider it if we do have twelve members. So unless anyone wants to call that special, item two is now before us, colleagues. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you, that item's been approved. Next items?
Next items are items three through nine, also public hearing items, and, uh, the recommendation for council action is to open the hearing and continue the hearings and ordinances to March twenty-sixth.
Okay. Anyone like to call those special? If not, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, we need to vote on those?
Uh, no, Madam President, those can be unanimous vote.
Thank you, unanimous vote, and those will be continued. Next item.
Uh, next item is a finding of public convenience or necessity in Council District thirteen, and recommend, a motion is required to either grant or deny the application.
I would move that we grant, um, the, uh, motion.
And a motion, uh, vote is required on that one.
Okay. Madam Clerk, if you could please open the roll on item number ten, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you, that item has been approved. Next item?
Item eleven is also a public hearing item, and I believe there is a card on that item. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Uh, there is a, uh, card on item number eleven. Actually, there are several cards on item number eleven, so we will hold that on the desk. We did, it looks like we do have a card on number eight. Um, I don't know if they wanted to still speak after we've already approved that item, if they were in favor of it.
And that was an item that, actually, the, uh, hearing was opened and continued to, uh,
Okay.
March twenty-sixth.
Okay. Thank you. So, uh, for Sarah Burdine, that item was, and others that are listed here, um, that that will be continued to the twenty-sixth, you said? Correct?
Yes, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. Next items?
Next items are items which public hearings have been held, items twelve through twenty-one, and reports are, uh, in the process of being submitted on seventeen and eighteen. HCD met this morning, and the reports, uh, have not been submitted as yet, so do you wish to hold seventeen and eighteen?
We will hold items seventeen and eighteen on the desk. Any other specials, colleagues, for items twelve through sixteen and nineteen through twenty-one? Any other specials, colleagues? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you, those items have been approved.
And, Madam President, just for councils, or just for the record, on item number twelve, that ordinance will go over for thirty days to April fourth. Uh, that cannot be, uh, adopted on first reading.
Thank you. And colleagues, all those items that, um, have been approved today will be going forthwith to the mayor. Thank you. Next items?
Uh, Madam President, you have twelve council members now. Do you wish to reconsider item, the ordinance on item number two, so that can be adopted?
Madam Clerk, you were correct, we did have twelve today, so thank you. Um, we will reconsider item number two. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
That item is now before us, reconsidered. Um, if anyone does, wants to call that special? If not, uh, we will now open the roll on that item, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Next items?
Next items, Madam President, are items which public hearings have not been held, items twenty-two through thirty-three, and ten votes are required for consideration.
Colleagues, any specials on items twenty-two through thirty-three?
Uh, you have a commissioner on item number twenty-two.
On twenty-two. Three zero, okay, thirty for Mr. Labange.
And there is a card on item thirty-one.
On item which number?
I believe thirty-one.
Thirty-one, okay, I have not seen that yet, but item thirty-one, we'll have a card. Okay. Any other specials, colleagues? Thus far, we have twenty-two, thirty, and thirty-one. If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Those items have been approved.
And, Madam President, there is a special meeting that was agendized for ten fifteen. Do you wish to recess the regular meeting and take up the, uh, special meeting?
Yes, please.
Alacon Cardenas, Grohan, Weisar, Labange Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosanel Smith, Weiss, Weston, Zine, Garcetti, twelve members present in a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. Uh, first item.
Uh, this is a one-item agenda, and it is an item for which public hearing has been held. A Plumb report has been submitted and distributed to the council members.
Thank you. Anyone wish to call this item special?
Can we call that special, please, Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Weisar. Can we? We'll continue to the regular meeting.
And then that would conclude this special meeting.
Conclude the special meeting. Next item?
Uh, do you wish to take a public comment at this time?
Thank you. We'd like to go, I think, to the commissioners before we go to the public comment. So if we could go to item number twenty-two and ask, um, Ms. Garcia to please come to our front desk. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, um, should say Madam President. First, I want to thank our candidate, Ms. Lilia Esther Garcia, for volunteering her time. The East LA Area Planning Commission is a very dynamic commission, many, many issues that are coming forward. And I know I was there the day you came before Plumb Committee. I want to thank Councilman Jack Weiss for taking over the committee on that day. But as you know, there's issues that come to mind when we talk about housing that people can live in, people that can, housing people can afford. Can you just share with us some of the, uh, skills and, and what you would bring to the table in trying to achieve these consensus issues and, and listening to the folks that have these types of cases? Can you just share with us what prompts you to be in this East LA Area Commission, and what you think you can bring to the table?
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilman.
Can you just bring the microphone a little closer to you? There you go.
Good morning. My family, uh, created a home in East Los Angeles in nineteen fifty-six, and I understand the great, there's a big part of our population that is not represented in our current government system. You, for example, represent a significant part of this community that cannot engage in it. I believe it's important to represent those who don't have a voice, living in East Los Angeles for thirty-four years and owning a home there for the last eight years. I'm very aware, as a resident and as an advocate, the importance of creating parks and schools and safety and lighting, and that housing is affordable. I think it's a reality that the home my parents built, it took them four jobs to buy a home in East Los Angeles. And today, our residents struggle with the same, though not, not with the same market system. So I hope to bring that voice and to encourage more participation.
Okay, Ms. Garcia, and I just want to thank you. I'm hoping that, as you go through your crash course on Planning One-O-One, that the processes in themselves are fairly complex, but they're also processes that, as you learn, I don't give you the opportunity to share that knowledge with those who come before you as they go through that process. But do you want to take a moment to thank your mom, Ms. Garcia? Thank gracias por todo el apoyo, el buen ejemplo hemos dado, y se ve en las hijas que usted tiene aquí ahora. You also have your sister, which happens to be the school board member.
Yes.
Monica Garcia, great to have you here. And you also have other members of your family here. Would I introduce them?
Absolutely. I have my sister, Anna Maria Garcia, who's a family law attorney, and Paty Garcia, who's a judicial secretary, and my partner, Kelly.
Great. Congratulations, Feliz Navidad, and, uh, I encourage an a-vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Weisar?
Thank you very much. I too just simply want to thank you for giving up your time. We know that you are very active, not only in the regular work you do that is so much needed in our community, uh, standing up for those people who don't necessarily have a voice, who need this type of support that they do. And it was great to see the LA Times this weekend recognize the work you do in a large, uh, piece in the business section of the LA Times, uh, going through some of the work that you do and, and highlighting, uh, how important the work is. So, we know you're busy not only with your regular job, but the many extracurricular activities you do to make our communities a better place. And I think you're the type of person we need on this commission, who understands our communities and is able to move forward an agenda that is inclusive, but at the same time knows that there's some voices that need to be heard. So, uh, thank you for your willingness to serve. I think you're going to do an outstanding job. And I want to, again, as Councilmember Reyes did, thank your mother, and she's doing a wonderful job with all the beautiful, wonderful sisters that you have in raising them, and, um, I know that you're going to do a wonderful job. We're here to work with you. I look forward to working with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Labange?
Thank you very much. I, uh, rise to support someone I just had the opportunity to meet early on, but I know your sister because of her dynamic leadership that she gives the children of Los Angeles, and having met your mother and your family and your partner, I just think it's so important. And to look at the area, as Mr. Reyes says so well, it is a transformation of all of Los Angeles all the time. And having that knowledge, uh, and, uh, vision, and also having the thought, that I'm sure around family you talk about schools and, and joint use and parks and everything, so congratulations. And I also will say, I've never seen anyone with a nicer jacket, a bright yellow jacket, because it's sunshine, uh, in Los Angeles today with your appointment to the, uh, East Area Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmen.
Thank you very much. We're very excited about your appointment, um, and your fa, all of your family being here and their, their commitment to the city. Combine all the hours you all work to help make the city better. You've done a great job, so glad to see them all here, supportive, and your partner being here today. And with that, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item?
Oh, Madam President, do you wish to take a public comment at this time?
I will take a public comment. We have two from the San Fernando Valley, actually, three, I believe, no, two. Uh, Miriam Fogler, followed by Sharon Brewer.
Yeah, um, good morning.
Welcome back and our condolences.
Yeah, um, I'm wearing the ribbon here as a tradition and goes back to King David, and that's why the police officers wear it on their badges. They, it's, uh, to do, to tear the garment and to wear it for thirty days. Um, my mom would be proud, would, would be proud of us if we would do things that's right and, uh, cut out the, uh, wasteful spending and, and stop taxing the people to the point where there's no return. As you can see, the gas prices are going up more, and, uh, you know, the, uh, Daily News is bashing the workers, you know, the raises. And then you got Clinton, and obviously, you don't know about her history, but she is the end of the world, folks. She, there's no future for her. Larry Nichols said that. And I'm hoping that this, this state and this city will wake up to the fact that Hillary is not the candidate for President of the United States. She's, uh, they're, they're, to me, in my opinion, they're, they, uh, believe in-
Madam President, she is not talking about something that's within the jurisdiction of the city?
Yes, it is, because Clinton-
No, it's not.
Ms. Fogler, the city attorney gave your advice. If you could please continue.
The, uh, the city is impacted who becomes President of the United States. Obviously, you're going to Washington lobbying, and you're sidetracking me. I need my extra second back, that the fact is that she is not capable of leading this country, and neither is Bill Clinton. So in my, in my opinion, they're in, they're incompetent, and they're, they're done bad things to people, and I don't want them to be president, because they, they will not do the ser, they will do the service to Los Angeles, the city. So I need to get back to the, the employees. I'm tired of them being bashed, because they're the middle class. Like, you've been, you've been talking about the middle class here. You want people to, uh, help, uh, one another here to be, to help the middle class. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sharon Brewer?
Hi, Sharon Brewer, um, public comment. Special event fee waivers, February two thousand and eight, seventy-nine total, forty-three with amounts, two hundred and eighty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight plus, twenty-eight to reimburse, two, uh, eight no amounts. January's total was sixty total, thirty-two with amounts, five hundred and twelve thousand, ninety-seven dollars plus, twenty-six reimbursed, two no amounts. Two months total, one hundred and thirty-nine total, seventy-five with amounts, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five, fifty-four reimbursed, ten no amounts. Two twenty-five, oh eight mid-year financial status report, CLA recommendation, three D, institute citywide ban on non-emergency overtime, including LAPD. Non-emergency overtime. Non-emergency overtime for LAPD shall include but not be limited to scheduled overtime shifts. I guess this citywide ban means that LAPD will not be used for two upcoming special events, the Persian New Year, and especially the Israeli festival held at Woodley Park, which has almost the entire Van Nuys Police Force, Police Department, standing around the entire day. I'm sure that LAPD not being used for these two events will save a lot of city funds. My question is, why have so many LAPD, um, been used in the past for this event? Um, the other thing is, I spoke about the, um, neighborhood councils and having them not be exempt from possible cuts with their funding. There was an article in a paper that was here yesterday by Daniel Weiss, and he, it said that there was approximately eight point two million dollars sitting as unspent funds. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brewer. I'd like to call the following individuals: Arnold Sacks, Michael Hunt, um, Linda Sun, and I'm sorry, I can't read the other names after that, and Lawrence Dickerson. Arnold Sacks? Making your way, thank you.
Good morning, County, good morning, City Council. Um, I'd like to apologize for my actions during last week's, um, presentation by Councilman Alacon regarding the unique training program at Lomas Landfill. Today, I'd like to address the uniqueness of the program at Sunshine Canyon Landfill, unique on two fronts. One, the county is not accounting for sixty-six hundred tons of trash, and the fact that the county, both the county and city governments find this acceptable. To recap, the county last, in two thousand and six, May of two thousand and six, more than doubled the landfill at Sunshine Canyon Land, at Sunshine Canyon, from six thousand tons to, per day, to twelve thousand, one hundred tons per day. That would be thirty-six thousand tons a week to sixty-six thousand tons per week. One question about the discrepancy between sixty-six thousand and seventy-two thousand, six hundred, which would be the correct answer, the county's, um, speaking on behalf of the county, one of the representatives from the Department of, I guess, uh, Sanitation, mentioned that the sixty-six hundred tons is fill that's spread over this landfill to keep the trash from blowing away. On three fronts, that's questionable. One, that's a lot of dirt. Two, if they were spreading dirt over the landfill at sixty-six hundred, at twelve thousand, one hundred tons, they'd be spreading dirt over the landfill at thirty-six hundred, thirty-six thousand tons, which would lower that total amount. And three, the ordinance mentioned intake. Let's look at some real numbers. Based on a cost of five hundred dollars per truck, that comes to a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars not accounted, one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars not accounted for by the county, or eight million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars not, per year. That's a lot of money when we're facing a budget deficit and a shortfall. You would think that somebody in the county or the city would look into this. Thank you for your time, your patience, and your answers.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Michael Hunt?
Well, thank you. Uh, Mr. Reyes, I turned off the bathroom lights when I went to the bathroom. I saved some energy for you. And to all my distinguished kids over here, this is called the First Amendment. I'm in a lawsuit with Los Angeles County City for violating my First Amendment rights. When you get in trouble, the federal judge tells the city what to do.
Madam President, he should be directing his comments to the council as a whole, not to the audience.
Well, I'm, I'm giving him an educational piece.
Thank you.
And, uh, but furthermore, this is why I'm wearing a T-shirt.
Your warning, please, to, to address the council. Thank you.
Okay, and I'm going to address the council. Um, we're still here, after two years, after getting a, a federal judgment, Michael Hunt versus the City of Los Angeles. We're not going away. On this Friday, I'm going back to my Klan outfit. You know, I'm going to be Mr. White again. Um, we really got like, probably like eight thousand hits from LA City Council, so get ready for the show. And, uh, the license for the dogs, I'm still not for that. Woo! And so, I always remind yourself of that. But furthermore, you guys should really remind yourself, you shouldn't violate anybody's First and Civil Amendment rights. And you guys wouldn't have this down here. Uh, and, and to all my colleagues from the eleventh district, James Dabney, you need to go see him and tell him, you know, you want this out of here. He's over at LAX in apartment, apartment F. If you go see him, I wouldn't be down here. You know, that's what you need to do. You need to get in your car, go over there and say, you know, it was unconstitutional. And to the rest of you guys, you guys should follow what the eleventh district is doing. Thank you, I'll be back in two and two. Love.
Thank you. Linda? Is Linda here from, uh, media from Highland Park?
Yes. Hi. Uh, I just want to make one thing. Can I change all the government staffs to my people? I don't get the right service I want. They don't even understand what I'm saying. I talk very easily and clearly and repeat after repeat. I'm getting tired and really sick and tired of it. Thank.
If you let us know which council district you're in, one of them will be able to, to assist you. Um, Lawrence Dickinson, Dickerson, excuse me, Mr. Dickerson? Followed by Daniel Garcia.
Uh, this is a public comment. Um, during my tenure as a tour guide at the Watts Towers, I noticed that the City of Redevelopment Agency, California State Park, Department of Wrecked Parks in terms of maintenance, and then Department of Cultural Affairs is going on with, uh, with maintaining programs. Though in the interest of, uh, counteracting some of the negative impact on the constituents that a, a budget cut necessitates, if we could look at infusing a second budget into the tour program at the LA Watts Towers, and also the community arts and school-based programs that are now being offered exclusively by Department of Cultural Affairs, and introducing city and parks and recreation. Uh, City and Parks of Recreation has done a great job with the Rose Garden there in Watts. They've established a community rapport. And it would seem at this time, a, a more, uh, community-based program that would allow the towers to be open for tours, uh, for students, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, they are now not open during those hours, that would allow for an expanded, uh, community involvement, possibly, uh, visitors being trained as the docents are trained at LA Central Library, older people, a lot of the senior citizens center to actually give tours as volunteers to the visiting schools and students. So, infusing cash into the Charlie Mingus Youth Arts Center, uh, involving, uh, personnel with a background and experience. For example, there's a director at one of the LA Parks childcare facilities, her name is Medina Dolphin. She's out on, uh, Eubank, somewhere out in Wilmington, near, uh, Wilmington Park, Banning area. She has a daughter who's been in dance and music for numerous years. She's the director of the childcare center, working with parents and community, and, and has the kind of a credentials and background that, that could allow her to run a facility such as that in, in the communities in behalf, and inclusive of solicitations and volunteerism from, from local community and organizations.
Thank you very much.
Um, then you go here, and I, I want to let my, any help, any help do provide, so he will speak for me.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, City Council. I am Daniel Garcia, representing Community Rehabilitation Services consumers in East Los Angeles and San Gabriel areas. I'm here on behalf of consumers who feel that access services needs to improve the services that they provide. One of the areas of improvement needed is that there must be access service signs on public, in and on, at public places like veterans' hospitals, airports, senior centers, senior centers and other facilities that people with disabilities gather to enjoy the quality of life that others enjoy. Those access service signs that are in place in public places like Dodger Stadium help providers who generally don't know where to pick up access users, and, and would help them to locate, to find those users. After working on this issue for three months and gotten the support of numerous agencies such as Alzheimer's Association, La Familia, United Living with MS, Alma Family Services, United Farm Workers, and California Senator, State Senator Gilbert Sadio, I would like to mention that Access Services Incorporated has come forward with the idea to collaborate on this issue. on this issue. I met with the person in charge of assigning the access services signs, Louis Pacheco, and he informed me there are access signs in places where there are high concentration of people with disabilities. Mr. Pacheco informed me that there are places that they will not allow signs because the owners express there is no need for access for them, such as Staples Center. I explained to him what happened to my family and myself at L.A. Convention Center on Saturday, February 24th. We were told to go to an access sign stand and wait there for the driver to pick us up. My wife and I had no idea where the sign location was and where to get the information. To make things worse, the driver had no idea such signs existed at L.A. Convention Center. So I proposed that in order to help the rider and the driver to find the access service signs, two things must happen. All information pertaining to access services signs must be online on the ASI website and frequently updated. ASI must create and implement a policy that all drivers must have the same information pertaining to Access Signs Incorporated. Thank you for your time and your patience.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Mr. Garcia, if we could get a copy of that and we can ask, share that with our Department of Disability to be able to ensure some of those access in our Department of Transportation.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. If you could give it to our security officer, our police officer on the side. Thank you very much. That closes public comment. Madam Clerk, next item.
Next item, Madam President, is item number 11, and that was called Special Four Cards.
Thank you. If we can hold that on the table for a moment, go to our next item.
The next item, items 17 and 18 are also being held for committee reports. Next item then would be item number 30, that was called special by Councilmember Labange, and I believe there's a card on that as well.
Okay. I don't see Mr. Labange here right now. Could we take item number 31, that is related to a card? And that would be Miriam Fogler down in the San Fernando Valley. Ms. Fogler?
Yes. Prop S, I hope it will be heard in court and be contested and defeated because this obviously was a misinformed and fool thing that you put before the voters. They didn't know what they were doing. And I hope God will protect the people and stop the corruption here at City Hall all the way to the White House, including, but I mentioned earlier Clinton, because obviously there is no future if we don't get the right leadership here and in Washington. If you guys are going to Washington to lobby, I have a right to say that she obviously is not someone that I would look up as a character to be leading our country. So I don't know what else to say, just the fact is that I hope that the rest of the states don't vote for her.
She's way off topic on this item right now, Ms. President.
Thank you, Ms. Fogler.
Well, you know what? It does impact the city here. Whoever becomes president, obviously you're going to Washington lobbying them.
This item is regarding certification of Prop S?
Yes, of course. They ought to know what's going on here in Washington that you're trying to pass taxes on us. Prop S was the first step, and you'll continue to go ahead and keep doing that until the middle class is broken and there'd be nobody left to be able to keep our society together. And I hope God will step in and suppress the disaster that you're trying to invoke. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, if you please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Twelve eyes.
Sorry, Mr. Hunt, you had an opportunity. Mr. Hunt, please go, we'll open up the item again, but you have been here for a while and knew this item was before us. Madam Clerk, we could open the roll on reconsideration of that item, close the roll, and tabulate the votes. Well, Mr. Hunt, we have now reconsidered the item. So do you want to speak or not? Okay. If we could vote on that item once again. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Twelve eyes.
Thank you. Mr. Labange, item number 30. We do have two cards on it as well.
Good. I'll succeed if they want to speak first.
Okay. Great. We will do that first.
If they want to speak for a minute each, I'll only speak for a minute, but if they take two minutes, we'll have to use the full time.
Well, we have given them two minutes on these today. So Arnold Sachs followed by Sharon Brewer. Mr. Sachs? Arnold Sachs?
Out of the chambers, I think.
No, he's right here.
Very good. He's out of the outside of the chambers. Out of row.
Thank you very much, Arnold Sachs. Very quickly, this gym and the recreation facilities, I was wondering if it possible that City Council would consider amendment based on the fact that the Quimby funds that have been collected are not being used and that maybe the Quimby funds could be used to add to the facilities that the parks so desperately need, the gym areas in the cities that the city will find difficulty raising funds for certain accountable items. But the Quimby funds are $130 million right now and not being spent, and people need to realize that those Quimby funds are actually going to be used for the high-rise apartments and the housing that they're going to create for their own private public parks, and the general public as stands won't be using them. But I think it would be a great idea for the City Council to consider amending the Quimby funds to be used for items on the agenda that address the general public, such as these outdoor gyms in city parks. Thank you for your time, your attention, and your answers.
Thank you very much. We'll go out to the San Fernando Valley. Ms. Brewer, and then we'll be followed by Michael Hunt. Ms. Brewer?
Hi, Sharon Brewer. Item number 30, communication from Chair, Arts, Parks, Health, and Aging Committee relative to implementing outdoor gym areas in the city parks. Recommendation, instruct the Department of Recreation and Parks to report to the Arts, Parks, Health, and Aging Committee on implementing outdoor gym areas in the city parks. Fiscal impact statement, neither CAO nor the CLA have completed a financial analysis of this report. Once again, it's a really nice idea to go and have outdoor gyms so that people can work out and become healthier, but the way it is right now, Recreation and Parks has a hard enough time maintaining the existing facilities that they have. They're short on staff, and it just doesn't really seem feasible to go and ask them to do more things, especially when you don't know what the cost is or where they're going to find the personnel. Thank you.
Matthew Hunt? Matthew Hunt's next. Do you want to go first?
No, 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 I'm sorry. Matthew Hunt?
Want to help me out on this one? You're in charge of the Parks and Recreations?
I'll help you. Take your shirt off and take your hat off.
Well, you know what that agreement is about. Hey, it was the city, I think the Parks and Recreation who sold the fraudulent permits. If they're going to be permitting outdoor activities with a permit, I say no. Now, if you're just going to provide an outdoor service without paying and not selling fraudulent permits, I would be in agreement for that. But the monies and everything, it should really, really, really go to helping the kids. I think that building more facilities for people to work out and charging them, I don't think that's benefiting the city. I think Parks and Recreation should have a responsibility to our kids in not building more and more permitted or non-permitted locations as far as arts and gyms are concerned. So on that note, I'm going to say, I think, I say, everybody should vote yes on this one, just because they're going to do it anyway. It's predictable, they're predictable. But really, the money should go for the kids, not an outdoor gym area trying to educate the kids. You should shift the money from the city budget to the education fund, and maybe we might have something. On that note, I just want to tell you guys that Parks and Recreation, like they said, don't have enough, they don't have enough resources out there. They can't do anything. I think it was the Parks and Recreation was part of the lawsuit that I was engaged in, Michael Hunt versus the City of Los Angeles, because the Parks and Recreation sold fraudulent permits. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Labange?
Thank you very much. Mr. President, members, here's an opportunity for us to look at our open space and have physical fitness space. One of the challenges that we have when we build buildings that costs millions of dollars, but if we have outdoor exercise areas, it could improve the opportunity for those who walk in our parks to get upper body strength, to improve their fitness, and especially the young people. So with that in mind, I'll be working with each and one of your offices to try to identify a location for those who would want to exercise to a greater degree, all of us. How many took a walk this morning in the chambers? Raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We're not doing well, Los Angeles. Eight. Eight right there. Ms. Han, good walk there. Eight. And I'm nine, I took a hike in Griffin Park. So all of us have to exercise more, so this opportunity then comes for us to try to do a more experience for our good health. A healthy body is a healthy mind, and a healthy mind is what we want in the City of Los Angeles for everybody. So I ask for your support and on your participations. My deputy, Ms. Kim, will be contacting your offices to identify those parks that we should do this. In the great era of the 1984 games, then Mayor Tom Bradley arranged for these type of facilities in several large regional parks. We should do it again, and I thank you. Thank you, Mr. Smith, and look for all your cooperation and support.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. There are no other speakers on the queue. Madam Clerk, if you please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. For a special presentation, Ms. Han?
I'm okay.
Okay. Councilwoman Han, you have a presentation, I mean, introduction?
Thank you. Quickly, I would like to introduce about 20 students from Jordan High School, government class students and their teacher, Mr. Marine. Why don't y'all wave? Nice to have you, Jordan High School, government class. Glad to have you here.
Thank you very much. I'd like to introduce Mr. Parks, Councilmember Parks, for our next presentation.
Before I get into my presentation, I just got a surprise visit. My daughter's here, and my grandson, I didn't know they were going to be here. My daughter, Trudy, and my grandson, August. So I want to say hi to both of you. Where's Nick? And Gabrielle? And Nick, who's my grandson, who just started at USC. We'd have it no other way. Let's see, our guest today, and we're going to bring him out in just a second, is, and let me ask, Herb Weston, would you come up and join me? Young man that we wanted to introduce today, and we realized is out of sync with our Friday program, but the fact that the crush of business where he plays professional sports, he's only available today because they're on the drive to a, hopefully a championship for the City of Los Angeles, and they should be moving quickly. One of the things I'd like to set up is he walks in the room, and that's Derek Fisher, the point guard for the Los Angeles Lakers. He's joined by his wife Candace and their children, and also we have, we should also have Mr. Jim Hill, who's here, has been here on a number of occasions, is also part of this. Let me ask Derek and your family to come on up. And Mr. Weston, thank you for joining me. Before we get started, I want to bring back a little nostalgia.
We're going to get Jim to come up?
Jim, come on up. A little nostalgia. Let's key that DVD and let's see something that is somewhat memorable. It's no childhood pictures that we have to worry about.
Gary gets it to Fish at the buzzer. Got it! Got it! 18-foot ball away, Derek Gozer.
Gets it to Fish at the buzzer. Got it! Got it! 18-foot ball away, Derek Gozer.
The way he left the stadium, we just caught him this morning, he was still running. And so I'd just like to make this, have, take this opportunity, we wanted to honor Derek before he left the Lakers, and it didn't work out, so now we get to honor him for what he's done, but we get to welcome him back as he gets ready to hopefully get that fourth ring. But let me give you a little background. He was born in 1974 in Little Rock, Arkansas. He is an 11-year veteran in the NBA, three-time champion. He's the starting point guard for the Los Angeles Lakers. He's the president of the National Basketball Players Association. He grew up in Little Rock, Arkansas, attended Parkview Arts Science Magnet High School. He has one brother and one sister. He was selected 24th overall in the 1996 NBA draft for the Lakers, and he spent his first eight seasons there. He played a significant role in their success. He averaged double digits in points in three different seasons and won three consecutive NBA championships with the Lakers. During the time with the Utah Jazz, and I told him earlier, he never looked like Derek Fisher in the Utah Jazz uniform, but we're glad he's back. He made sports history again when he missed the first championship game due to the illness of his daughter, but then he arrived in the fourth quarter of the second game and just in time to score the winning three-point basket, which proves not only his commitment to his family, but also the commitment to his team. He's also ensured that, the fact that he graduated from University of Arkansas, Little Rock, he went back and donated $700,000 gift to build an auxiliary gym in their new sports center. He also established the Fisher Fellows, which is a mentoring program for neighborhood middle school students. This program provides guidance to sixth, seventh, eighth-grade students from Southwest Middle School who are paired with University of Arkansas-Little Rock student athletes to learn the concepts of life, academics, organizational, social, and athletic skills. Derek is a communications major. His fellows are a very special program because it is something that he wished to have been educated much younger, but he's certainly making sure that a number of Little Rock kids are getting that opportunity. In 2006, he was elected the president of National Basketball Players Association. As the president, Derek will vote on policy issues and will be a liaison between the union and the NBA. During offseason, he enjoys his time with his children, his wife, his family, fishing, and he also is a traveling and music connoisseur. I would like to, and behalf of the City Council, resolve today, in behalf of all elected officials, that we declare March 5th, 2008 as Derek Fisher Day in the City of Los Angeles.
Let me first thank Mr. Parks, Councilman Parks, for making today happen, and say to my colleagues here that I'm glad that I'm inside and not outside, because being surrounded by these three trees, they would blot out the sun, and I might catch a cold or something. So I'm glad that he opted to do this inside. Derek Fisher, as we all know, has been the glue that has kept the Lakers basketball team together. It is his intelligence, his calmness, and the way that he makes other players better. It makes them extend themselves more, and that's why we won not too long ago, three championships in a row. For two years, we, as Laker mania and Lakedom, we have cheered for our team, but we've been a little disappointed, not in their effort, but in the fact that we didn't have all of the tools to make it go. The moment that he was resigned, and with the emergence of some of the younger players that has blown the mind of all of us fans, we now see an organization that can again bring back the glory and make all of us shout and scream. Now, I hope we don't have many more .04 moments. Let's do it when it's like .1, because that was heart attack city. It definitely was. But what you don't really know about, well, what we're beginning to find out about Mr. Fisher is that he does put his family first, and that's more important than anything else. And it's an honor to see your lovely wife and your kids. Another thing, when the L.A. Sparks would play, my wife and one of my staff members had season tickets. Mr. Fisher was the one Laker that you could see at the Sparks games cheering them on, because people need to realize that it is critically important that women have an opportunity to be engaged in professional sports as well. It is a great experience to be part of a team. So this man is more than just .04 seconds. He is the glue that helps hold this organization together, and we in this great city are fortunate to have him here. I should also say, and then I'll stop, is that I confiscated a basketball that was owned by one of my staff people, which is now mine, that I had Mr. Fisher sign. So anyway, with that, Derek, congratulations, welcome back, and today is your day, and thanks for the win the other night.
Thank you. Mr. Parks? Mr. Parks, we do have two councilmembers that would also like to give some words of greeting.
Let me ask Mr. Jim Hill, if we can keep the faith for just a second.
Yes.
Thank you. Madam President and ladies and gentlemen of the city council, one of the great joys I have as a sportscaster is watching individuals who grow up to not only be outstanding athletes, but those that give back to the community and have high morals and really care about their family. This is a perfect example in Derek Fisher. One of the best descriptions, or the best description I have ever heard about Derek came from Phil Jackson. When we asked Phil Jackson to give us his description of Derek Fisher, he said, "Derek likes order." And right now Derek is helping to restore order in the Western Conference, and hopefully the NBA championship, that order will come back to Los Angeles. Derek, congratulations, buddy.
Thank you, Jim. Nice to see you. I'd like to ask Mr. Reyes, Mr. Alacone, and Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to stand and thank Mr. Fisher for the inspiration. Earlier this morning, we talked about our tribulations as a city with our youth, how easy it is for a youngster these days to pick up an automatic weapon and do the things they do to each other, black on black, black on brown, on and on. And to have you invest the way you have in our youth, for our kids, hopefully we can penetrate that mindset that says it's not right to shoot at children, it's not right to shoot at schools. And that's something you bring that, there is no price tag to that. And it's just a great joy to have that type of opportunity, and to see folks like you actually give back in a very direct, in a very clear way that says, "We need," as Mr. Hill said, "that order." So, we have a tradition here. We had James Worthy, as Mr. Hill pointed out in his show last night, here before. We have you, Mr. Fisher, and hopefully you can be that starting point of that trend that allows these athletes to give back and really look at what's valuable for ourselves, not as a community, but as a family. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Alacone.
Mr. Fisher, I had the opportunity to tell you that you are my favorite Laker, not because you are so talented on the court, but because in the midst of the storm of activities that major athletes find themselves in these days, you have restored the comp and been somebody that can be respected by young men in our cities. And I think that's the kind of leadership that we need on the sports playing field. And I also, I didn't steal this basketball. I didn't confiscate. I know what you said. But this is my James Worthy ball, and I'd be honored if you signed it, because you are amongst the best in the history of the Lakers, certainly. And regardless of what happens at the end of this season, and I do think the Lakers are going to be the champions, but you're going to be a champion no matter what happens, and you always will be. Thank you.
Mr. Labange.
Madam President, and as Representative Hollywood, I often quote from film, and one of the greatest lines in that 1939 classic, "There's no place like home," when Dorothy say that in The Wizard of Oz, and "There's no place like home in Los Angeles." And the excitement in this chambers, I just can't believe all the people come from all the offices who aren't here. It's not this, it's not this, usually packed in here, but this is all the staff that come, the excitement, they know that you're back here. And I want to welcome your family back into life. We have one request, though, to come and testify to our Transportation Committee of the Council to see how traffic has changed in the three years since you've been out of town. It is a big challenge in the city, but the traffic on the basketball court is what you're so good at doing in your leadership and the joy. And having Jim Hill here is so important, because there is a, in all seriousness, there's a challenge, as we spoke briefly every day in Los Angeles, of young people and not going the right way and going the wrong way. And we also, as many police officers as we need in the city, we need coaches, and we need inspiration. And you're an inspiration, and I'm proud to stand and welcome you back and your family to Los Angeles again, and have a great experience with the Lakers. We hope to have a special event motion sometime for the Lakers soon. Thank you, Mr. Parks and Mr. Wesson.
Mr. Parks.
I know Mr. Parks was a football man and a track man. I know Derek is the size that he is, and Jim was a football man. I'm glad you weren't with the big basketball players, because I'd really feel for you there.
Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you. I think it's fitting that we happen to be honoring you and calling this day in Los Angeles Derek Fisher Day, because last night, as Phil Jackson described you and your demeanor and your character, last night the Lakers were getting whooped in the first half. They were down six points, eight points, 12 points, you know, bad calls and all that kind of stuff, but you could see, it's interesting, if you look at last night's game, every time Derek Fisher got off the bench, there wasn't concern in his eyes, there wasn't this confusion in his eyes. He was very calm and collected, and then the last time they pulled you and Kobe off the bench, I happened to notice that, again, you were very calm, and you were still down several points with only a few minutes left. But guess what, ladies and gentlemen, last night was a display of true character in the form of a basketball game, when the Lakers came back, overtook the game, took the lead with only a couple minutes left, kept the lead, increased the lead, and did their business the way it's supposed to be done. I describe that to everybody, because I think it's what we saw on the court, that not every person can do what they do at work and then do it at home. Not every person can do what they do at work to that excellence and then do it in the community. And the reason why we're willing to call this day Derek Fisher Day, because you are one of the unique individuals who actually has brought that character throughout every aspect of your life, and you deserve this honor. So I just want to say, despite what the negativity people say about athletes should not be role models, uh-uh. Derek Fisher, you remind us that if a person wants to be a role model, they deserve to be a role model, but with it comes that responsibility. Congratulations for living up to that responsibility.
Thank you. Ms. Parks.
Derek, in behalf of the Los Angeles City Council and all elected officials, we want to present you with scroll and say, "Congratulations, welcome back." And as Tom said, we hope to have a special event motion at some point to where we can get your fourth. So congratulations, thank you for being here.
Well, first of all, thank you to all the women and men and ladies and gentlemen of the council. This is truly an honor and a privilege to be here today. Oftentimes, we have special events and parades and whatnot for accomplishments on the court, and very few times are athletes and personalities able to be a part of such a special event like today because of who they are as people. So this is really a special time for me, a special time for my family, who I must thank first and foremost, my beautiful wife Candace, and all of my children who are here. Without them, without their support, wouldn't be an ounce of demand that I am standing here today. It is their love, it is their support, it is their patience, it is their understanding. Even when I don't deserve it after having a bad game, they're still there for me and they still love me just the same. So thank you to my wife Candace for everything that she is and everything that she is for me and for our family. Please continue. I'm just gonna finish up really quickly.
Yes. You can take as much time as you want.
No, I won't be here long at all. And I also want to thank, just obviously, Councilman Parks for allowing this to happen specifically. Not only Mr. Parks here, but also Bernard Parks Jr., who's been in support of myself and my family and our team for years. I want to thank them specifically. Thank Mr. Jim Hill for being here this morning, Mr. Wesley for being here. And I want to thank the City of Los Angeles in particular. I was born and raised in Little Rock, Arkansas. I moved here at the age of 21, and so everything that I am at the core of me is an Arkansan. But from the age of 21 to now 33, I've primarily been a resident of the City of Los Angeles and the state of California. And the biggest part of who I am as an adult male, as a person, the things that I believe in, the things that I've come to believe in and support and want to fight for, have been because of this city, the people of this city, the government of this city and of this state. And I'm truly thankful to be able to, in a sense, call myself a Los Angelino, a Californian. I have a California driver's license. I pay my taxes. And so I want to truly thank this city for being what it has been for me. I know we're here to celebrate some of the things that I have been able to do and provide for this city, but the city has given me much more than I can ever repay back. And last but not least, to all of you as council members and employees of the city, as you continue to do your daily work to make this place better for all of us, and not just all of us here today, but my children, your children, grandchildren, all of the work that you do in your different districts and different councils, please know that I stand here today and I pledge to you that any help or service that I can provide to help with your cause, that's what I'm here to do. I play basketball for a living. I'm a father and a husband forever, but also I'm a member of this community, and I understand that it's important that I pay my debts and I pay my time in order to make sure this community is what it needs to be, so that when my kids grow up, they're as proud to be in this city and be a part of the Los Angeles community as I am. So thank you very much again. I'm truly honored, and have a blessed day.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to
Thank you.
Just ask you for permission to use the chair and have a group photo.
Take a group photo. Madam Clerk, next item.
Next item, Madam President, item number thirty-four was called special by Councilmember Weisar.
And Mr. Weisar, we do have one card on that item. You want to have the speaker first? Yes, Mr. Labange?
Madam President, as we clear the John Ferraro chambers, can I, with Mr. Weisar's permission and your permission, introduce a very special delegation real quick?
Please.
Okay. Wasn't that exciting, everybody there, to have Derek Fisher back in Los Angeles? And Mr. City Attorney, in our history, recent history, what was the greatest time in Los Angeles? The 1984 Olympic Games. And members, today we have a very special delegation from Beijing, China, as they celebrate the Games of Beijing this summer in Los Angeles. I would like to ask the delegation to stand up. They are here along with Barry Sanders, the former commissioner of the 1984 Games under the direction of Peter Huberoff and the late, great Harry Usher. They have been meeting with officials of our Department of Transportation, Mr. Fisher and others, as well as Mr. Simons of the '84 Games, and these are the people who are key to make the game successful. They came just for a brief moment to Los Angeles. And I also want to let you know, members, that China's first athlete in all the Olympic movement came in the 1932 Games. One athlete came, and then after that, we had the horrible period of the Olympics after World War II. But then again, in 1984, China sent their first team back. It was a big team, and they were cheered. So we welcome those leaders of the Beijing Olympic Games, and I'd like to ask President Sanders of our Recard Parks Commission for 30 seconds.
Well, China also won the first medal of the '84 Games, and we're so pleased to have this delegation from the city. We have an agreement with the City of Beijing to exchange groups and exchange information about sports, and having these visitors here is a fulfillment of that agreement.
All right. Well, thank you, Recreation of Parks Commission. So we say xie xie, xie xie, and good luck. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Welcome to Los Angeles. Glad to have you here. I'd like to ask Catherine Leland and Tara Devine.
Good morning. Catherine Leland, Senior Director of Public Policy for the Central City Association. CCA is proud to be here this morning in support of extension of the Arts District boundary south to Violet Street. The new boundary will incorporate a number of highly successful live-work and adaptive reuse projects into the Arts District that are currently outside of its boundary. This is an important step in recognizing the growing Arts District. This new boundary will provide a mechanism to build strong connections between existing developments and also build a true community for residents and creative businesses. These projects have brought housing and a significant number of jobs to downtown, replacing what was mostly vacant or underutilized warehousing space with more than 150 jobs per acre. Importantly, ground-floor commercial and new industrial uses in these projects have provided incubator space for entrepreneurial ventures in Los Angeles. This includes companies in the new technology, fashion, and
It is about bringing forth those incentives that invites these companies because we want to sustain a manufacturing base, we want to sustain industrial base, but we also want to be thinking about our environmental issues, the notion of compatibility to build out these relationships in the future. So we invite you to continue working with us and stimulating that type of dialogue and identify those types of industries. So we have time to work forward, to look forward to a future that's going to be environmentally friendly. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, if you could please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. If we could go back to item number 11, Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Madam President and members. It's my understanding that I have several individuals that are here from the community, the district that I'm fortunate enough to represent. What I would like to do in the interest of time is to have, Madam President, two representatives from the community and the property owner and his representative, they come give their statements, and then I will make a request of the full council.
Great, thank you. So we'll have a five minutes on both sides, correct, for that? And so we have R.J. Stroetz and Charles Doherty, and it'll be a total of five minutes between the two of them.
And if I could jump in, this item is a fair hearing matter requiring the heightened attention by the council members to the public speaker or to your monitors at your desks.
Good morning, council members. My name is R.J. Stroetz. I am the legal representative for Windsor Village Community Association. I'm also a resident of Windsor Village, and I will briefly summarize two of the major appeal points that we raised in our written briefs, both the original and the supplemental. These are but two of the legal points. The first legal point is the fact that when the advisory, deputy advisory agency recommended and approved the application of the developer, unfortunately, the city planning department skirted various legal procedures which were necessary in order for any type of approval or recommendation to be made. And this skirting of the process has caused the illegal grant of a vesting tentative tract to the developer. According to the Park Mile specific plan, any submission for approval of a vesting tentative tract map has to be submitted by the director of planning directly to the Park Mile Design Review Board. That never happened. Therefore, any such grant given is totally illegal, and the grant has to be vacated forthwith. The second point is the fact that the City Planning Commission failed to indicate any type of mitigation with regard to the aesthetics of the project, the land use, and cultural resources. If the two subject historic homes are razed and demolished, there's no mitigation available with regard to bringing back two historic homes. Also, destroying the two historic homes will decimate the cultural resources of the city of Los Angeles. I believe that covers both points, and legally, city council is mandated to grant the appeal filed by Windsor Village and also required to cause city planning to vacate the grant of the applicant's vesting tentative tract map. Thank you, and I do request that the appeal be granted.
Good morning. Happy Derek Fisher Day. My name is Charles Doherty. I live at 906 South Windsor Boulevard. I am president of the Windsor Village Community Association. Windsor Village, in the heart of Los Angeles, is a community of mostly single-family residential homes with some two-story multi-density units. Most of the buildings were constructed in the 1920s and '30s. It is also home to the Wilshire Ebel, which is an historic monument, and the Ruskin Arts Center, as well as Harold Henry Park. On October 26, 2007, an interim control ordinance went into effect protecting Windsor Village from the further destruction of predatory developers. Despite the fact that the ICO granted certain developers an exemption from the effects of the ICO, the exemptions are narrowly defined. Because the subject adjacent to lots, which are the subject of the appeal, are located in the Park Mile area, an area extended for less than one mile and only about three blocks wide, the exemptions granted to this particular developer are even more narrowly defined in that the developer's architectural plans, including the architectural style of the building, the colors to be used, and the building materials to be used, and the scale of the building, are required to be scrutinized by the Park Mile Design Review Board. If this developer's plans do not pass the DRB scrutiny, then the developer is not exempt from the ICO, and he cannot build his project. The fact that the City Planning Commission, through its deputy advisory agency, granted the developer's application for a vesting tentative tract, the city planning department gave the developer the functional equivalent of a building permit. Under Los Angeles Municipal Code Section 17.15, Section C1, approval or conditional approval of a vesting tentative tract map by the advisory agency confers a vested right to proceed with development. However, however, the Park Mile Plan places a restriction on any ministerial granting of approval by the advisory agency by requiring the DRB to make specific findings that the project of construction meets the stringent requirements of the Park Mile Plan, which has as its main purpose the protection of the historic surrounding neighborhood, not merely the block where the project properties exist. City planning had no power to grant the developer's application, and the fact that it did flies in the face of the Park Mile Plan and the letter and spirit of the ICO, which is to protect the historic nature of Windsor Village from the predatory practices of developers. Honorable members of city council, please do the right thing and grant the appeal submitted by Windsor Village. We all thank you for your time and attention to this matter. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much. I'm not sure, I think, and Derek Jones and Bonko Ronald Cargill, you also have a total of five minutes.
Thank you, Madam President.
Hello, my name is Bonko. I'm the owner of 751 South Windsor Boulevard. I'm also a resident of that house, too. I live there. Just wanted to clarify some of the things that were mentioned earlier. There is an application to the DRB that was submitted to the planning department in May of 2007, so it's not as if any of those issues were ignored or skirted in any way. Also, just to speak really as a homeowner, I've shown you two aerial photos that I've distributed to the people on council and to so you guys can understand what the neighborhood is like. I live in a house that is surrounded by large condominium buildings on all four sides, and I can understand for people who live in a single-family home area that when somebody proposes that a large condo be built next to their home, how upset they might be in terms of concerns about their privacy and the overall character of their neighborhood and how it changes things. But what I'm wondering is, what happens when you already live in that kind of condition? When you already live in a home that is completely surrounded and all the other blocks have already been converted into condominiums and apartment buildings? I don't understand why those other properties would be judged by one standard and my property, which is right next door, would be judged by a different standard. I know that a lot of the people that are living in those condominiums that are next to my house are here today to actually protest, you know, this project. But what they don't seem to understand is that when their buildings were constructed, that they went through the same conditions that I'm going through right now.
My name is Ron Cargill, Cargill Planning, representing the applicant in the subdivision application. And this is a 15-unit condominium subdivision. The density actually would allow 24 units. The project complies with the height, the setbacks, the parking requirements. We're providing one-half guest parking, and we're developing this property at a level that is less than what the permitted density would be. So at this point, I'm going to yield to Mr. Derek Jones.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you, Madam President. Council members, Derek Jones, Jones PLC Legal Counsel for the applicant. A couple of procedural notes. The appellant has identified a provision of the Park Mile specific plan that requires the director of planning to refer a tract map application to the design review board within five days. I just want to make clear that the applicant supplied inadequate number of materials that could be distributed to the design review board. His expectation is that the design review board will ultimately weigh in on this proposed project. However, I understand that as a matter of practice, the Community Planning Bureau does not circulate tentative tract maps to the DRB. I believe members of planning staff are here today to address that point. But in this context, it's critically important to note three things. One, the applicant did everything that he was supposed to do. Two, the applicant fully expects that the design review board will evaluate the design of the proposed project after the instant appeal is resolved. And three, the Municipal Code Section 1650 specifies that any design review board's recommendations, be they of the Park Mile Design Review Board or any other in the city, shall not affect any entitlement or discretionary approvals by applicable agencies and departments, in this case, the deputy advisory agency's approval of the subdivision. In other words, the design review board is looking at the skin of the building, they're looking at colors and materials. The vesting tentative tract map application that has been approved now by the deputy advisory agency, affirmed by the Central Area Planning Commission, does define the building envelope. This proposed project complies, of course, with the applicable limitations on height and setback. We'll be in front of the DRB soon enough to address the exterior of the building. But to be absolutely clear, under the Subdivision Map Act specifically, Section 66427A, a local agency shall not have the right to refuse approval of a tentative map on account of the design or the location of the building. So even if we were in a situation here where the design review board had some opportunity to comment on the design prior to the subdivision being approved by the deputy advisory agency, under state law, the city does not have the authority to disapprove the map based on the proposed design of those buildings. Finally, just a quick point of order, the interim control ordinance expressed the exempts applications that were submitted, fees paid prior to the adoption of that ICO. In this matter, the fees were paid on August 2nd, fully 10 weeks prior to the implementation of the ICO. Thanks very much for your attention, members.
Thank you very much. I do, Mr. Wesson, before you speak, I do, we do have a number of people, just to put their names into the record, that were here for the appeal. Stephen Sapinar, sorry, I apologize for any mispronunciations. John Alston, Gary Stickel, Victoria Boskel, Betty Fox, Flora Batista, Holly Hope, Allison Sapinar, Grace Yum, Julie Grist, Candace Madrell, Olive Kearney, Sandra Lee, Soon Kong, James Kun Hong, Jun Kim, Sung Chang, Saki Sharoda, Raoul Chu, I think, Polly Chu, Bi Eng, Yun Kang Soon, Joseph K.S. Chung, Monica Chung, Sun Yee Kim, Ke Jong Chung, Te Hyang Chung, Ok Ron Hung, James Choi, Michelle, sorry, can't, oh, Michael Hunt, I'm sorry, Michael did not have a position, Denise Frey, Pam Z. Burris, Neil Pennella, Shula McCoy, and well, Michael Hunt turned in two cards, we're not sure of his position. Thank you very much. These are those of you that were here for the appeal. Thank you very much. Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Madam President and members. Although I am sensitive and understand the concerns of the owner of the property, I request that my colleagues will support this action. I move that the appeal be granted in full, that the findings be made, that the tract map is not consistent with the Park Mile specific plan, that the application was not given to the design review board, and that tentative tract number 67880 be denied. So I ask for your unanimous support.
Is there a second on that? Mr. Labange, did you want to speak?
I just want to thank you, Mr. Wesson, because we share this district, and I'm familiar with this constituency, and your work that you collectively, collaboratively, is doing there is enhancing neighborhoods. And I think much of the success of that is in the zoning and making sure it's adhered to the desires of the community. So I thank you for your leadership.
Thank you very much. This item is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Next item.
Next item, Madam President, item number 17. The committee report has been distributed to the council members.
Thank you. Item number 17 is now before us. Believe, is this the item that is related to?
Yeah, this is the Purchase of Homeownership Opportunity Sites Program, and this is in Council District Nine.
Council District Nine, okay. Unless Ms. Perry wants to call the special, we will now open the roll on item 17, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. Next item.
Madam President, just for council's information, number 18 is the consolidated plan, and that's still being held on the desk. The committee report hasn't been submitted and distributed as yet. And there is a special one that has been distributed if council wishes to take that up at this time.
We will take special one now.
And the maker of the motion will speak to the findings.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. In working with the city attorney, what I want to put on the record is that this motion will allow Old Church LLC, a private company to pay the city of Los Angeles, and Bureau of Engineering employees to do a feasibility review of a green roof on top of a motor transport structure being constructed for LAPD. It's important that we take action today, allow the study to begin, so that we don't cause further construction delays of the Motor Transport Division parking project. The fact that we are about to enter a week-long council recess has caused me to bring this forth under Rule 23. I have reviewed this motion with our Public Works Committee Chair and Councilmember Rosendale, and all of the involved city departments, and they are supportive.
Thank you. This is on the findings. Any additional remarks, Mr. City Attorney? No, okay. We'll vote on the findings. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. That item is now before us. Ms. Perry?
Just to allow us to proceed with the feasibility in a timely way so we don't incur more construction costs.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Perry. Seeing no one calling that special or on the queue, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on special one, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. Next item.
Next item, Madam President, is special two, and that was introduced by Councilmember Wesson, and the city attorney will speak to the findings on that matter.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Madam President. I will recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Since the posting of today's agenda, the LAPD requested the council offer a reward for information leading to the arrest of suspects responsible for the murder of Jamil Shaw on March 2nd near Fifth Avenue and 21st Street. Immediate action is required to apprehend the suspects for the safety of the community. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substance of motion.
Thank you. The findings are now before us, so Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Madam President and members. I won't go through all of the gory details that I went through yesterday. Yesterday, we adjourned in the memory of this young man who was a good student at Los Angeles High School in the district that I represent. He was on his way home from the mall, and he was shot and killed three houses from his house. Today, I rise to ask that you support this reward motion that will offer $50,000 for the arrest and conviction of the individuals that committed this crime. So I ask for an I vote.
Thank you. Ms. Perry?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, you know, a lot of times when we do these motions in council, I sometimes wonder whether other people who might be listening really and truly understand that this does affect them, that this should move them and touch them, and that, you know, we're not all that far apart. Now, I have an email here from a receptionist in my field office who was related to Jamil. She referred to him as her stepbrother. And, you know, we're not that far apart geographically, but, you know, this has devastated this family. And I think as we move forward, not only in offering this reward, and that's a small offer to make considering the loss that this family has sustained, and as we move forward in our budget deliberations, and I hope we put some of our, I guess, political issues aside and focus on how this affects people in the communities that we represent, and that make sure that our votes reflect that we're serving at the highest and best of our ability to meet the needs of the people in the community. This is a family that did everything right, and in one short moment, this young man was taken from us. And I think it should hurt all of us. We should all be upset, we should all be angry. And sad thing is, is this is not even the end of it. So thank you, Mr. Wesson, for doing this, and I also wanted to speak because the young lady who works for me asked me to say a few words on behalf of the family.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. Next item.
Madam President, the HCD report has been submitted and is in the process of being distributed on number 18, and there is also a Budget and Finance Committee report on that, and I believe they both concur.
Mr. Wesson.
Yeah, again, thank you, Madam President and members. All of us know that for the past couple of years, they've been difficult years for the city of Los Angeles from a financial perspective. And it seems like every year that I've been the chair of this committee, we've had to cut services and cut programs, and it's probably one of the most difficult things that we do, you know, on the job, on behalf of the people of the great city of Los Angeles. But we do the best we can with what we have. So what you have before you is a con plan, and we've amended it, amended it to try to restore certain services that are critical to the city of Los Angeles. The last item, I spoke of this young man who was just killed Sunday, coming home from the mall. What happened to him is not an isolated incident. We have these things occurring throughout the city of Los Angeles. So for me, it only made sense, and for the committee, by unanimous vote, that we restore money for programs for our young people, to try to afford them the opportunity to grow and be productive adults. We also had a commitment that Mr. Cardenas and I, and Mr. Reyes and Ms. Perry are going to work together and have a hearing on this recent rash of violence, where we ask the hard questions, where we bring in the gang prevention people and intervention people, and we bring in representatives from the schools, and we bring in the police department, and we try to come up with something that is real. This is a dire situation, and we have a responsibility to try to save our youth. So I could not, in good conscience, recommend to the other members of the committee that we gut these youth-related programs. So we creatively did the best that we could to restore this funding to the budget. One of the second priorities, members and Madam President, was domestic violence. As elected officials, we have a responsibility to take care of those individuals that cannot take care of themselves. So we restored that funding to the best level that we were able to do. And thirdly, we felt that in order to do the things that we want to do, where it relates to helping youth and creating jobs in the community, that we would invest money in our economic development. And we got that done by unanimous vote. So what I ask of my members, who share basically the same beliefs and feelings that I share, is that we unanimously support this consolidated plan. And the last thing that I want to say is a thank you to all of the individuals from the CLA, CAO, and all of the other departments that worked hard under very difficult circumstances, where they had to take less and try to do more, and I commend them for that. So with that, Madam President, I ask for a I vote.
Thank you. Seeing no other individuals on the queue, thank you, Mr. Wesson, for your leadership on this. I know it's been a tough year, being able to deal with that. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. That item's been approved. I particularly see the CAO/CLA's office happy about that, smiling in the front row. Thank you. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those will be posted and referred.
The excuse is on the desk. Council President Garcetti requests to be excused Wednesday, March 26th, to leave at 11:45 for city business. A motion is required.
Yes, Mr. Weiss moves. Mr. Smith seconds.
Councilmember Parks requests to be excused Tuesday, March 18th, for city business, to leave at noon, and that meets council policy.
He will be excused.
Councilmembers on request to be excused Friday, May 2nd, for city business. That also meets council policy.
He will be excused.
And that clears the desk.
Thank you. Any announcements today, colleagues? Any announcements? Any adjourning motions? Yes, Mr. Garcetti.
Just as a reminder, we will not be in session this Friday. We will be lobbying in Washington, DC for the National League of Cities Conference on some of the top priorities, transportation, housing, community development, gang issues in DC. So we will not be in session this Friday, nor Tuesday and Wednesday of next week. So we will be in Washington, DC on behalf of the citizens of Los Angeles lobbying on Capitol Hill. So if anybody was planning on showing up, we will next be in session a week from this Friday. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garcetti. Yes, Mr. Labange.
Mr. Garcetti, I'll be joining you in Washington at some point on issues related to the cat park and the Hollywood freeway, and issue related to pitch points, the subway system, and issue related to restoration of Griffin Park, visiting our delegation and engaging them in issues of Los Angeles. I thank you.
Thank you very much. Any adjourning motions today, colleagues? Ms. Perry? Yes, if we could ask everyone to please rise.
And just as an FYI for everybody listening, while I was sitting here, I just got another email that I had another homicide last night. So we're up to about 23 or 24 in the last five weeks in Newton Division, and this one was in Southwest. I don't know whether Mr. Wesson had a chance to adjourn. Did he already adjourn in memory of Mr. Shaw? And if it's not too late, I'd also like to add my name. Lucille Williams, I'd like to adjourn in her memory. She passed away March 4, 2008, at the age of 83. She was born July 14, 1924, and she was a remarkable woman whose tremendous passion and love helped shape the lives of so many individuals. She was a hero to her family, or a heroine, a very compassionate friend, and a countless contributor to the community. Whenever she was needed, she was always willing to lend a helping hand, and she will continue to live in the hearts of many. She will be missed, but not forgotten.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Reyes.
Madam President, I just wanted to further amplify what was said about the number of homicides. Northeast alone, last year I had five homicides. It's now March, I'm already up to 10 northeast alone. So... So the gravity of the situation is growing, and I just want to remind all my colleagues of the conditions that some parts of the city are in when it comes to the level of violence and the war that's going on right now in our own neighborhoods.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Any other adjourning motions? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. This meeting's now adjourned.